First item is I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-six, twenty-two-four.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is our public comment section if we have anyone signed up. Okay, we do have several speakers tonight, so I will just go straight down the list. When I call your name, please come to the front table, state your name and address. Please direct all comments only to the board. You'll have three minutes to speak and you'll see the timer above you and we can see it as well. First up is Jordan Sisson. Yep, go ahead.
My name is Jordan Sisson. I live at thirty-nine twenty-five at Du-Ittle Drive in St. Louis. Good evening. I'm Jordan. I'm a math teacher and SEO building coordinator at Horace Mann. I'm here to speak in regard to the proposed soon-to-be cut position of Dean of Students. In my role, I see how valuable the Dean of Students is to our students and staff, our families, to the function of the building at large due to their roles and responsibilities, and I compel you to preserve this position. As educators, we know that the Dean of Students' role in building relationships with students and facilitating an increased focus on student and staff relationships is highly effective in increasing student attendance, well-being, academic prowess, and belonging at school. This includes participation in various weekly team meetings, communication with families, assisting in behavior management, and finding solutions to our students' ever-evolving and growing needs. For example, we've had a five percent increase of minor behavior incidents and a fifty percent increase of major behavior incidents compared to this time last year. Given that our administration is often fulfilling their other duties, the Dean of Students is necessary for this and other supportive students, staff, and families. Although I am speaking to the position of Dean of Students, Robbie Gratchuleski specifically has transformed this role into a position of leadership, connection, and follow-through that we've not seen before. Along with assisting in the facilitation of an immeasurable number of behavior responses, Mr. G alone has led in twenty-two percent of this year's major behavior incidents, which includes problem-solving with staff and students and direct communication with families compared to three percent completed by our admin. Mr. G demonstrates the passion and active involvement in the school day like we wish every administrator would, and this has meant that he is unable to complete his duties without working outside of contract hours. If the daily contract hours are not enough for a deeply committed Dean of Students to complete these duties, and with disruptive and unsafe student behaviors on the rise, how can we possibly cut this position while also implicating that we are doing whatever it takes for student success? I hope you are inspired today to notice the needs of our staff and students and how we value each other. By definition, the human brain does not have unlimited capacity to think, to learn, to act, to process, to regulate. I do not know one teacher who has not expressed feelings of burnout, and we need more support than ever. I'm asking you to reconsider the elimination of this position that is so important to the support of staff and students every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Melana Nicolai?
My name is Melana Nicolai. I live at eight-twenty Brown Street, Wausau. Good evening. My name's Melana Nicolai, and I'm a science teacher at Horace Mann Middle School. I'm here tonight to express my concern regarding the proposal to cut the Dean of Students' position at our school. As an educator and neighbor to Horace Mann, I'm asking you to reconsider your decision in eliminating this position. The Dean of Students has numerous amount of roles at Horace Mann, including student behavior management, attending grade seven and eight team meetings, which is four meetings a week, provides behavior support at all grade levels, oversees attendance, which includes truancy, juvenile justice representative, attendance at Marathon County truancy meetings, operates truancy court for Horace Mann, cites students who are truant, and fills out proper paperwork, monitors all tardies, and follows through with school tardy policy. Dean of Students also assists the principal in observing and evaluating non-certified staff, works with the court system, police department, and social services as the liaison for Horace Mann. Dean oversees detention and the alternative learning center, assists with substitute teacher assignments, including being in the classrooms when there are not enough subs available, which has been a lot lately. Coordinates and supervises state and district assessments, assists with leader and me in regards to student connection. Dean coordinates services with Northwoods Alliances and the Journey Program, homebound instruction coordinator, coordinates bullying programs and initiatives such as SUSO, leads the EMLSS team, helps facilitate behavior plans, creates universal supports in the building, communicates to parents, works with staff, facilitates threat assessments, assists with special education when needed, daily lunch duty and playground supervision for two grade levels, and builds relationships with students and staff. As you can hear, the Dean of Students is a critical position at Horace Mann. This year has been one of the more difficult years, but by having the Dean of Students, I feel heard and considered throughout various situations. Without the Dean of Students, I do not understand who's going to be following through on all these rules. The principal and assistant principal are often out of the building for various meetings and such, which often leaves the Dean to be the only admin in the building and therefore supporting students and staff. As student behaviors increase, there needs to be enough adults in appropriate roles, not the teachers. Providing order and following through of consequences of poor student behavior is so that all students can be successful. As members of the school board, I ask that you listen to the teachers here expressing their concerns about the well-being of students and staff. It is necessary to preserve the Dean of Students' position at Horace Mann Middle School despite the current budget deficit. Thank you for considering your perspective on this matter, that the impacts are students, classroom, and school.
Thank you. April Gradzuleski? Apologize if I didn't do well with that.
Hi, my name is April Gradzuleski. I live at three-seven-two-nine Carl Street, Wausau. So I'm an English Language Arts teacher at Horace Mann Middle School, and I have been for the last nine years. Tonight, I am here to express my deep concern regarding the proposal to cut the Dean of Students' position at Horace Mann. As an educator and a member of the community, I am urging you to reconsider, as you can hear many of my colleagues are as well. Our middle school has had significant behavioral challenges and needs over the years, and it only continues to grow. This year alone, we've had six-hundred-and-seventy-two major behavior incidents. That's two-hundred-and-thirty-five more than we had at this time last year. That's a significant increase. Clearly, our needs are growing. Our BTF data also supports that the Dean is the one responding to behavior daily, handing out appropriate consequences and repairing relationships where needed. The Dean plays a pivotal role in creating a positive and safe learning environment for both students and staff. Without this role, students who frequently struggle with their behavior in the classroom will remain there, continuing to escalate and creating unsafe environments for students and staff. Additionally, with our class sizes continuing to rise, projecting to do so next year, the need for dedicated support in managing these behaviors is needed more than ever. Along with that, the responsibilities of the Dean extend beyond disciplinary actions. The Dean serves as a mentor, a mediator, and an advocate for students who may be struggling academically, socially, or emotionally. By providing guidance and support, the Dean helps foster a sense of belonging and community within the school, which is essential for school success for students. I could list all of the things that our Dean does that you've already heard, but I think that you understand that there are an innumerable number of responsibilities that this one person serves. And currently, due to this multitude of behaviors throughout the day, this Dean is also working outside of school with parent communication, communication with teachers, and working on behavior plans and interventions. If we can't keep up now, how can we expect our administrators to continue to do their jobs effectively without someone in this role? To put it plainly, eliminating this position would hurt students. Investing in the Dean is a proactive measure in addressing behavioral concerns. Research shows early intervention and support for students who exhibit behavioral challenges leads to improved academic outcomes, reduced long-term costs with disciplinary actions and dropout rates. As a member of the school board, I implore you to prioritize the well-being and academic success of all of our students by keeping this position at Horace Mann Middle School. I understand that with a budget deficit, the district has to save money where it can, and I know that there are no easy answers. But when considering the needs of our students, it is absolutely not the area to which to make the cut as this Dean of Students' position is on the table. Thank you for listening to our perspective on something that directly influences our day-to-day with what we do with the students we love so much. I trust that you'll make the decision that serves the best interest of our students' well-being. Thank you so much.
Dan Merkel?
Good evening. My name is Dan Merkel. I live at one-five-four-eight-zero-seven Castle Rock Lane. And I am proud to say I've been with the Wausau School District for thirty-three years. It's my thirty-third year. Every one of those but the first at Horace Mann. Been with them since they opened. I'll be reading the first part of four parts of a letter. It begins with, "The following letter is a combination of thoughts and concerns from various staff members at Horace Mann Middle School. We are writing to express our concern regarding the proposed elimination of the Dean of Students' position at Horace Mann. As faculty members of the school community, we strongly believe that this position is essential for maintaining a safe and conducive learning environment for all students. The Dean of Students, specifically Robbie Gratchuleski, has played a crucial role in managing student behaviors when other administrators are unavailable. His consistent follow-through on student consequences and communication with staff has been instrumental in maintaining order and discipline within the school. National trends show that behavior issues in schools are on the rise. According to the popular EdWeek education website, quote, "Student behavior problems have continued to rise over the past three to four years." According to a recent survey by the EdWeek Research Center, seventy percent of educators, including one thousand fifty-eight teachers, principals, and district leaders, say students in their schools are misbehaving more now compared with the fall of twenty-nineteen." That's the author's part there. Horace Mann's behavior tracking form, or BTFs, show behavior incidents following this rising trend. At this point last year, in the twenty-twenty-three school year, we had four-hundred-and-thirty-seven BTFs. Presently, we have had six-hundred-and-seven, six-hundred-and-seventy-two major BTFs. Last year, one thousand seventy-one minors. This year, one thousand one hundred and twenty-two minors. Our behavior needs continue to increase, and when our administrators are out at their weekly administrator meetings or other various meetings that pull them away, the Dean of Students, specifically Robbie, can be counted on to take care of student behaviors." That ends the first part of four.
Thank you. Tracy, is it Works?
Works.
Works.
Hello. My name is Tracy Works. I live at four-zero-seven Coulter Street in Wausau, Wisconsin. I'm a science and geography teacher at Horace Mann Middle School for seventh grade. This is part two of our letter. The responsibilities of the Dean of Students are extensive and cover critical areas such as student behavior management, attendance oversight, coordination of support services, and facilitation of behavior plans. The following is a description of the Dean of Students' current role at Horace Mann, which would have to be absorbed by the current principal and assistant principal. Student behavior management and team meetings, grade seven and eight, four team meetings a week, behavior support at all grade levels when called by staff to assist. Oversees attendance, truancy officer, juvenile justice representative, runs attendance correction committees, meetings to help correct behavior, attends all Marathon County truancy meetings and truancy court for Horace Mann Middle School. Cites students who are truant and fills out paperwork to take to court. Monitors all tardies and follows through with school tardy policy. Assists the principal in observing and evaluating non-certified staff. Works with courts, police departments, social services, et cetera, as the liaison for Horace Mann. Oversees detention and the alternative learning center in one-hundred C. Assists with substitute teacher assignments, especially when there is a shortage. Coordinates and supervises state and district assessments. Assists with leader and me student connections. Coordinate services with Northwoods Alliances, Journeys Program, homebound instruction coordinator. Coordinates bullying programs and initiatives. Leads the EMLSS team, helps facilitate behavior plans. Attends school events when administration is unable to, creates universal supports in the building, communicates to families, works with staff to assign appropriate students, facilitates threat assessments, assists with special education when needed, daily lunch duty and playground supervision for two grade levels, builds relationships with students and staff, and responds to medical emergencies. This is the end of part two of our letter.
Thank you. Lisa Mans?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Mas. I live at seventeen-thirteen Maple Hill Road in Wausau. I am a substitute teacher at Horace Mann there two, four, sometimes five days a week. I'm also a Wausau School District parent of twenty-one years. So as continuing from the, on part three here, as you can see, eliminating this position would create a significant void that would impact the entire school community. Furthermore, the current salary for the Dean of Students is based on a teacher contract and does not seem to align with the reported savings on the agenda materials. It is important to ensure the financial implications of this decision are accurately reflected. Moreover, the loss of the Dean of Students, Mr. G, position would result in an increase in detrimental behaviors as evidenced by the data from the BTF, behavioral tracking forms that we've talked about a number of times. This would have direct impact on the learning environment and academic outcomes of students at Horace Mann. Considering the unique challenges facing our school, including the upcoming consolidation of students onto one floor to make room for the charter school, we feel now is not the time to eliminate such a critical role. The Dean of Students' position is actually cost-effective and necessary for addressing the escalating behavior issues. We urge you to reconsider the decision to eliminate the Dean of Students' position and to prioritize the needs of our students and staff. Thank you for your time and consideration. And now is part four.
Thank you. Amy Olson?
Good evening. I'm Amy Olson, and my address is eight-one-six Moreland Avenue in Schofield. I am the attendance and athletics secretary at Horace Mann Middle School and have been there for five years. And I'm going to read the fourth and final part of our letter, which is a signature page. I'm going to read each and every person that wanted to put their signature with our letter. Sincerely, Horace Mann staff members Melanie Kennedy, Abby Peterson, April Gradzuleski, Jordan Sisson, Amy Olson, Melana Nicolai, Nicole Knack, Dan Merkel, Dan Corhoda, Michelle Meyer, Andy Meyer, Heidi Peets, Terry Turtleott, Betsy Villiard, Deb Baumann, Vanessa Boers, Sue Engel, Sarah Johnson, Heather Sippel, Emily Martin, Carolyn Maronek, Kathy Valtheisen, Amy Walls, Heidi Imhoff, Mark Beersdorf, Nate Tomy, Jedidiah Weix, Julie Kuhn, Lynette Anderson, Kelly Rosenau, Nate Grams, Meng Tao, Quillen Wiseman, Michelle Klug, Rebecca Neskey, Tracy Works, Reina Boucher, Kristi Allee, Rebecca Paul, Ryan Schroeder, Monty Van Pakti, Lisa Mas, Nicole Natzke, Sarah Gardner, Mary Savage, Jared Savage, Stephanie Thompson, Ashley Nichols, Rob Stengel, Abigail Mirjeski, Nikita Quillman, Shania Warren, Emma Buckley, Jennifer Gruna, Chineng Veng, Amy Pagel, Emily Moots, Brittany Fennel, Sydney Nielsen, and Brenna Orman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came to speak to us. Okay, that brings us then to our next agenda item, which is our science resource adoption, A five. Dr. Katie Caldwell, Phyllie Shell, and Sarah Budney will share a representation. Elementary science standards have been revised with an emphasis on phenomena and science and engineering practices, A twelve. The last elementary science resource adoption was in two thousand and eight.
Good evening, everyone. We have an exciting opportunity to share with you this evening regarding our science materials and resources at the elementary level. So this evening, we would like to share with you a little bit of the information and the why around our science materials. And in the end, we, the elementary science department, will be requesting us to adopt FOS pathways as our K-five core resource with full implementation in the fall of two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So next fall.
Good evening, everyone. So why do we need new curriculum? Well, it has been sixteen years since we have adopted a new science curriculum. The current resource that we are using does not directly align to our NGSS standards, which are the next generation standards. The current resource requires supplemental resources, so we have it, but we have to keep adding more things to that resource to provide a great experience for our students. And then also, the current resource requires supplemental resources, and the SRF funds are available to support purchasing of this new curriculum to adopt to learning the needs of our students.
Excuse me, the material selection process, it's been about eighteen months that we've been working on this. The team included myself, Katie, and Julie, along with the science specialists, the technology integration specialists to look at the technology components of whether it would blend seamlessly with the systems that we have, but also to look at accessibility. And we did look at a multiple of different curriculums available, but we decided to move forward with the FOS. So when we look at that whole process, in the end, we really asked ourselves, what do we believe about learning in science? And we came up with this, this list of, of kind of grounding ourselves in what we know to be true about it. We wanted to create science literate citizens, make science and engineering relevant for and accessible to all students. This last, or this third one was probably the most important, and that was most important for the elementary science teachers was we want science to be hands-on. We don't want students to be learning about science. We want them to be actually doing it. We wanted to give them real-world context on what they're learning. And also this last one, we wanted to engage them to build confidence that they can be scientists, even at a kindergarten level, that they can look at data, they can come up with conclusions, and build that confidence so we can lay that foundation for middle and high school. So then we, when we're looking at the science standards, the NGSS, and when we look at a curriculum that's aligned with the new standards, we see these three core advantages. They provide deeper learning experiences, nurture higher-order critical thinking, and establish and build those transferable skills. The highlighter, the italicized part below that, kind of talks about the core statement of the standards, and I almost think about it as three parts, kind of of a braid. So you have the conceptual understanding, the science and engineering practices, and then these cross-cutting concepts. And then when we, excuse me, when we dive deeper into those three, the real exciting part is it's a bridge to those career pathways. So we look at college and career-ready, the ACP, and each of those three components really work together to help our students problem-solve kind of the world they see around them. When you look at the core ideas, that's the content knowledge of science. The cross-cutting concepts, that would be kind of these big ideas that go across multiple domains. So an example of this would be like structure and function. So we can look at the structure of a plant, and what's the function behind that? And then also look at the structure of a bacteria, and what's the function of those different structures? And then you look at the science and engineering practices and all those great things, like that's the kids doing science. Analyzing, interpreting data, using models, investigations. And all those science and engineering practices are intertwined within the curriculum and really build that foundation for that college and career readiness.
So we would really love to adopt the FOS pathways, K-five, for our science curriculum. One of the main reasons is it's phenomena-based. Curriculum promotes scientific thinking that is aligned with the three components of NGSS. The active investigation, like Sarah talked about, engaging the students, that hands-on activities that they would be involved in, real-life concepts related to career pathways, resources that provide accessibility like text-to-speech, different languages for our students. Some of the resources can be translated into Spanish, so that's exciting. And then extensions for our family connections, which is really important. So some activities can go home with students that they can continue to do along with their families.
So when we look at the investigative units of study, there's really those three pillars you see there with physical science, earth science, and life science. And the kindergarten through fifth grade modules that they would work through are there and listed for you. There is also great alignment with our FOS pathways to our forward state assessment. So that diagram is somewhat small, but you will see under the reporting categories, there is now a phenomena-based recording category for life science. There's students, students looking at their proficiency and mastery with cross-cutting concepts. You can also see that there's a link to earth and space science, and then that engineering piece. So you know, the, the number of points that are scored there, the number of item sets, and those kinds of things just show you that there's a strong emphasis. Those are standards-based. Those are Wisconsin State and NGSS standards. But FOS science is highly, FOS pathways is highly aligned with those concepts on the forward exam. And then a few slides here of just some data. FOS pathways is their newest module set that they have out, and it's been in construction. There are some districts that have used some of their pilot models. Some of these, you will see are large districts, but this is the Los Angeles Unified School District. And as you can see, what we're hoping for is that the number of students who are in the proficient and advanced is increasing, and the number of students in the basic and minimal are decreasing. So that's just one example. Then the next is in Hampton City, Virginia. Just looking at how the, that greenish-mint-green line across the top or blue line is their state scores and how they were able to cut the gap in between where they were with their students' proficiency levels and catch up to where that state score was in the three-year margin. These are Wisconsin schools currently using or moving into FOS pathways. As I said, some of the modules have been in construction, so we've been waiting to see what those look like in the vetting process before we made a final decision. One of the great things about FOS pathways as well is that they, they are, they have created some realistic timeframes and scope and sequence for how they offer science through an elementary school year, knowing the gravity of the ELA math, science, social studies, and what we do on a school day at the elementary level. So it's greatly aligned with the five-day rotational schedule that we have in a greater way than many of the other resources available to us are. And lastly, I just picked out this Chesterfield County, Virginia. They, just because of the demographic, they are a community that has, and you can see the demographics there across the top. And they did some great, they had some great strides with students. with students who were economically disadvantaged, and some great increases in their state testing through their pilot of FOSS pathways. So just as close as we could come to a demographic similar, not exact, to what our reality is here in Wassa. So just a little bit of data around some of our schools here.
Excuse me, as far as measuring success of implementation, we look at the student outcomes over time as far as all the assessments that are embedded within the curriculum. Second, our teachers were kind of excited about looking at student self-assessment and reflection tools, especially with Leader and Me kind of integrated within the schools, like students developing their own goals of what they hope to see themselves as scientists, align and reinforce those science and engineering practices so that they really have a strong foundation for those career pathways that lead into that middle and high school. And then, as Julie mentioned, this data assessment data on the forward exam.
That really concludes the formality of our presentation to you and request to adopt FOSS pathways as our K5 resource. There are some great videos and many more of just students talking about science and what they enjoy about science that we'll let you watch at your own leisure. But included those, and we would welcome any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, just a couple. I think this is great. When I see some of those modules, I'd like to attend some of those myself because they look interesting. One question, curriculum evaluation. Is there, I'm going to say, a curriculum industry tool or a curriculum industry site or evaluator that looks at all the different possible curriculums out there and then ranks, you know, here's an independent evaluation of science curriculums, an ELA in math. Does that exist, and if so, is science part of that?
Great question. There are a few. The one that you will hear most commonly is Ed Reports, and they do some science, they do have some science curriculums. They don't have all. They do math and social studies, and they're mostly math and ELA, to be very honest with you. And they do set up a system. They work with the state departments as well as the education department to kind of create a rubric. But like anything else, you know, if you subscribe and are part of Ed Reports, your information gets in. If you don't, then your information doesn't get in. But typically, where we go when we're looking at different curriculums, we first go to Ed Reports because I think it's the most nationally-known and stable kind of vetting process to work from. They do, they produce for you what their rubric system is in each of the areas so that you can see. They do align to some of the national standards, which many, you know, schools adopt in some way or another. So that's usually where we start. It's just a matter of not everybody is in Ed Reports, so you have to kind of investigate other platforms. There aren't many out there, very honestly.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yes.
Am I on the question? How many different programs did we evaluate?
Three, really? Yes, three.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other board member questions? I have one myself, and I've said this before. You know, I haven't looked at any of the four that you evaluated and wouldn't know what to look for if I did, so that part doesn't concern me. I see my role basically is just making sure the process was good. It sounds like you took a long time, and you had direct teacher involvement, so that's good. How did you decide, not why did you decide, but how did you decide on this resource? Was it like a vote, or everybody agreed this was the best, or was it, how did that happen?
It was a vote almost, but I would say it was unanimous between all the elementary science teachers, that every single one of them wanted to go with FOSS, and kind of staying true to, and I think I could speak to someone there in the audience there, but staying true to, we want kids doing science. And this was the clear kind of frontrunner of where they're doing investigations and they're diving into problems, and it fits within kind of the vision of the Wassa School District, so it was a unanimous decision to go with this one.
Okay, great, thank you.
I forgot one thing. Is this in the budget, given what we're going to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So there are ESSR funds that we set aside and allocated for the purchase of this new curriculum.
Thus the need to do it before September.
Correct.
All right, well done.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, so I am seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval to adopt FOSSS pathways as the K5 core resource with full implementation in the fall of 24-25. First and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
To our science teachers.
Moving on, we are sticking with science. We're now looking at our 912 science course sequence.
Good evening, thank you. I am joined tonight by Mark Ikas, Department Chair at Wassa East, and Mike Scheidler, Department Chair at Wassa West. We'd really like to talk tonight about where we're finding some commonalities within our science sequence between both schools, and where we would like to ask for a little bit of flexibility. So just starting with process, very similar to what we talked about regarding our ELA alignment. We really began the process spring of 2023, examining all of our courses that were similar. How similar were they? And then focusing on the alignment as we were preparing for the restructuring process. And our goal there was to offer as many different courses as possible to all of our students, including our AP and I, and our IB offerings, to ensure that all of those were going to be at the new 1012 building. So the initial course alignment was a smaller group of teachers that were working, and then as we met in the fall of this school year, we really began to include all of our teachers in these discussions. And then as we moved from restructuring to keeping two separate buildings, our conversations changed a bit to really focus on the 910 courses, looking at the same standards, having the same naming conventions, because we do have students that move back and forth across the river. And so we wanted to be sure that our foundation courses were going to align equally. And then what we're really looking at is continuing the sequence of science courses at Wassa East to lead into IB programming, and the sequencing of courses at Wassa West to lead into our AP offerings. So how do we ensure that kids are going to be prepared coming out of 10th grade to launch into either of those, and understanding some of the differences that we're going to need because those courses are a bit different? So what I'd like to do is turn this over to Mike to talk about what is currently happening at Wassa West, and then Mark will talk about what's currently happening at Wassa East, and then where we would like things, again, if we could have parity in our ninth and 10th grade, and then have a bit of flexibility in 11 and 12.
So at the ninth-grade level, we have an integrated science. At 10th-grade level, we have an integrated science, and then students are able to take electives after that. We also have an accelerated program in which students can do the nine- and the 10-year course in one year, and then jump into elective science at the 10th-grade level. I don't, I think the flow chart kind of speaks to itself. If you have questions on that, happy to answer anything.
Go ahead.
Hello again, everyone. My name is Mark Ikas. Over at Wassa East, our students traditionally take two pathways as they progress throughout science. The majority of students enter in their ninth-grade year taking the physical science route. From there, they've got options to go into biology, and then after biology, that really expands the opportunities they have, whether they wanted to go into chemistry, advanced biology, go into physics. We do see an accelerated group of students who enter in their ninth-grade year with that biology class. And typically, students on this pathway are interested in science already. They want to get into more science classes. And year in and year out, we see students at East double, if not triple up, with their science selections. And the green down at the bottom of the list is our electives that we offer. And then on the right side of this page is just the IB sequencing in order to get to the higher-level IB courses that we offer.
Are there specific questions for Mark regarding Wassa East?
Can you go back, just, yeah, one slide. And I just want to make sure I understand. So I'm a freshman coming into Wassa East. I'm going to start in physical science?
There's two options for this route. If they were identified as a student who can handle a more rigorous load, they've got the option to pass over physical science and enter in biology as a freshman.
Okay.
And then the chemistry and the physical science standards that they would get otherwise in physical science, they would get their sophomore year or junior year when they take the full chemistry or physics classes.
Okay. So you really have it covered both ways for the, what I would call the traditional track, and then those that want to go.
Yeah.
An accelerator, okay. That helps, thank you.
Yes.
Additional questions there? Okay. So a lot of conversation that our science teachers had, and Mark and Mike can get into the details of much of that conversation as they did most of the facilitation. What we would like to ask for in ninth grade is for physical science to be the course that our freshmen come in and take, so changing the integrated science at Wassa West to a physical science. The acceleration option, then, is different at East and West. At Wassa East, the acceleration option is to skip over that physical science and jump directly into Biology 10. While at Wassa West, the accelerated option is the 910 accelerated, which is very similar to what is happening at Wassa West right now. Wassa West has enough students every year that make that course request, that that course can be offered. And then in 10th grade, we would look at Biology 10 being the option in the general sequence, and then 11th and 12th grade electives being offered with instructor approval. Have I recapped that correctly?
So one question I would have. What would be the reason why students would be able to go straight to biology in ninth grade at East but not at West?
The biggest reason that we see is that while we would really like all of our kids to have all of those standards offered at that ninth-grade grade level, we would not have enough students potentially at Wassa East to offer a separate, discreet class, the 910 accelerated, where they would get all of those ninth-grade, 10th-grade standards at that time.
With biology, they can combine with 10th graders. Okay.
Correct.
That makes sense.
So it really is a bit of a workaround to be sure that we're offering accelerated. And then what happens at Wassa East when students get into the chemistry-physics is an assurance, then, that the standards that would have been offered in that ninth-grade class are covered, and that students fully understand them as they move through those upper-level courses.
Okay. So this is an unfair question, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Parity conversations came about as a result of restructuring. That was one of the things that was really a driving force behind it. Absent of that discussion, would any of you still endorse this model? If you weren't under the guise of build parity in our science program, would you still make this recommendation?
I would. This is kind of the plan when we were going through the restructure that we were going to go with, and a lot of the teachers thought this was a good plan to go with, so yeah, I would.
Okay. Because part of the, some of the feedback that I've been getting is that parity is becoming a buzzword, and it's kind of being done just to do it, not necessarily that it is, in all cases, better for the students. And I just want to be clear that, as the experts, you guys are the ones who are, in this case, still endorsing this model, even if you had a choice to stay what you're doing in each respective school or what have you, you would still go down this path.
If we did nothing at all, I think we would have 80 to 90% parity in all of our classes anyways. So this is just us working with East and making both curriculums better.
And one of the driving forces for this motion is by having the same naming sequence, it really allows the East teachers to collaborate with the West teachers, which I think it's been really nice the past two years, being able to see what they do really well and understand what we do really well, and build from there.
Because one of the concerns that I have is that if I read that right, at West, as a sophomore, you would have to take Bio. Did I see that wrong?
Unless you're one of the 910 grade, 910th grade accelerated students, you'd be taking Biology as a 10th grader, yes.
And is that the best choice for all kids? To force them into a, and you're going to have someone accelerated, you're going to have the majority in regular, let's say, regular standard track.
Our current 10th-grade course is probably 80% Biology.
Yes. Okay.
So we're just tweaking it, moving a couple of things around, and it's going to be full-on Biology anyways.
And so that, and I'm going back to the math curriculum discussion, where they talked about the integrated model being much more effective. And as I interpreted this, what we have today, what you guys are doing at West today, is that more along, would you consider that to be an integrated model?
Yes, because its name is Integrated Biological Physical Science.
Right, but, and that's the point, right? Is it in name only, or is it truly serving that?
My personal feeling is students, a long time ago, could, you could go through a mix of classes. You can mix chemistry, biology, physics, and they were just fine with it. They kind of understood what was going on. I think today's child is a little bit more concrete. They need to know they're in a biology class. They need to know that this unit is chemistry. They need to know that this unit is physics. This unit is earth science, and that's what our ninth-grade curriculum is going to allow. And then, when they start taking those electives, they know exactly what course they're taking as an elective, where, right now, I think our integrated courses, our kids are really, we're doing a chemistry thing, and they're not really sure if that's chemistry-physics or it's just science. They can't put a name to it. So I think this is going to help with that. And working with East, our ninth-grade program is pretty much going to be identical on both sides of the river, even down to maybe using the same worksheets.
Okay.
Our 10th-grade course, I would say, is probably going to be 95% the same. They have access to a pond, unless you guys want to dig up a pond over at West. Their curriculum's going to be a little bit different because they do a lot of pond studies over there. So there might be a couple of units that are switched a little bit out of order. But again, we kind of looked at their stuff, and we said, yeah, this does, this does look like something that we can do.
Okay. That's really good to hear. I appreciate that explanation.
To, to your point about having Biology be the most appropriate class as a sophomore, and looking at where the majority, the typical student is at with their math progression, i- it's pretty clear that most students can't handle the rigor of the algebra they see in chemistry, unless they're advanced, until their junior year where they've got that experience. So, having Biology as that main course their sophomore year is really important.
Okay.
Now, to piggy off what Pat said, and this is just, just me, one board member, but for me, the idea of parity between the schools isn't parity just for parity's sake, it's for kind of what you just described, so now the teachers on both sides can collaborate together, and we're on sort of the same pathway, and you can figure out what's working best. And also for me, it's, it's, we have two high schools in the same district, if one school is doing one thing and the other is doing something else, like, why don't we figure out which one is better, because one of them's probably better? The teachers that teach their program probably think theirs is better, and/or it's easier if you just keep with their programs, they don't have to learn the new ones, so I, I'm sure there's some of that, but I think in many cases, we could probably come together and pick the best parts out of both, so that we're having one best thing, but then there's gonna be exceptions. You got a pond, you're gonna do that, we don't, at West, and they do at East, and so, some of that's gonna change. But that, that's my idea of parity, it's not just for the sake of doing it, it's because, why can't we pick the best one? If, if we think one is working better than the other, then let's do that one, just for future reference.
Speaking to the ninth grade level, when the ninth grade teachers were working together, they were a great team on both sides of the river, very proud of both of them. Yeah, we, we, we're talking about, we would really like some earth science into our ninth grade curriculum, and they currently don't have some earth science over at Eastside. And, yeah, they're, these side teams, yeah, that, that makes complete sense, so I think getting the best out of old schools is happening already.
Good, great.
And one, one other question I forgot to ask, I'm sorry, the, so the folks before you just talked about the K through five sequence, and now we're talking nine through 12. What is the plan to bridge six through eight to both?
Six through eight right now is very solid. Sixth grade is already using some of the FOS modules in some of what they are working on, so there will be some continuity there coming out of middle school into sixth grade. Seventh and eighth grade has been working for quite some time regarding their standards work and ensuring that they're aligned on both sides of the river. Certainly with the new adoption in the elementary, and then with what we're going to be doing now at the high school, there's going to be some conversations with our six, eight middle schools' science teachers to be sure that they know what is coming out of elementary school and how that might look different for students, and what it is now that the expectation of our ninth grade teachers are for students coming out of eighth grade, so that work will continue.
So is that planned to be, 'cause these are both going live this fall, right? So when, when does that middle school piece come together for implementation?
So much of that conversation has been around the continued work of our middle school teachers with their standards, and now moving forward, we will begin to have that conversation for our April in-service time, a little bit of work in May, and then continue to over next school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval to implement the proposed nine, twelve science course sequence at the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year for both Wassa East and Wassa West.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Our next item is our ongoing construction update. As the referendum-funded facility improvements continue to develop, construction and budget updates will routinely be presented. And first up, we have preliminary design plans for the Wassa West athletic field at fifty percent. Oh, we have a construction first, okay, sorry.
All right, well, thank you everyone for having me here tonight, it's been a little while since we've had a chance to meet, even though it's been winter, there's still a lot going on in the construction world, I'm sure everybody has been driving around and seeing some of the work that's been done, so just hit on some of the highlights and see if anybody has any questions. So, starting off with Johnmere Middle School, the northeast classroom, classroom addition, six classrooms, that was completed over roughly the new year and handed over to the school for use. They have received the certificate of occupancy, and if you kind of remember from some of the other presentations, that's really the formal authority of juris- authority, having jurisdiction, saying the school is ready to be used, or this building is to be ready to be used by the public. So that, that's been open and being used, I don't know if it's being, like, every classroom is being used, but I believe the majority of them are being used right now, and there's some pictures of the new science room, new restrooms, and some of the standard classrooms. Moving on to the next slide, basically the same timeline with the receiving addition and the additional tech ed rooms, there's two tech ed classrooms added on, one of them is the new woods classroom, which you can see in the photo on the left there, you can see some of the dust collection ductwork running through there, and it looks like a lathe down on the bottom left, and then a prototype lab, which is in the center there. And now actually, they're currently starting to remodel what was the existing woods room that has moved into the new space, and then there's also a new receiving area on the north side of the school, which was connected to this portion of the building, once again, handed over right around the new year and being utilized by the school now. Something else that most people probably have seen as they've driven by there is, there's a lot of work taking place on the music choir addition, so basically wrapping around the, I'll call it the southeast side of the building, so that's under active construction right now. All the masonry bearing walls have been erected, structural steel has been installed, roof deck, eighty percent of the roofing is installed, so the, the addition is almost completely watertight at this point. Eighty percent of the exterior insulation has been installed, so if you see the picture on the bottom left there, what looks like yellow spray foam is yellow spray foam, so that's basically the exterior insulation, it'll either get covered with masonry product or metal panels, you can see above there, there's some, gonna be windows going in up there. Interior slabs have all been poured, and then thirty percent of the mechanical electrical plumbing roughens are complete at this time, so you'll continue to see that change, I mean, I guess from driving by, it's gonna maybe look a little bit slower, because all the exterior walls are up and all the work is taking place on the, the inside of the building right now. Moving on to the next slide, something you probably didn't notice as much is there was a lot of re-roofing at the Johnmere Middle School, so a lot of the existing roofs were replaced, and due to the favorable weather that we've had this winter, spring, we were able to get a jumpstart on that, and the roofing replacement is about eighty-five percent complete right now. And then the office addition, I'll go back one more for a second. The office addition, so we were looking at the music choir area as it's wrapping around, that continues to wrap around the building towards the west, it'll become a new main entrance, and then it'll also be the new office suite. The school has been able to find other places to go with their staff at the front office, and we're actually gonna get started a little bit early on that, so over spring break, they're gonna be doing some moving out of their office spaces, and give us an opportunity to continue to work on that addition. And then also, the existing locker room is going through a major gut remodel, that's gonna schedule, um, start over spring break as well, so. Lots still taking place there, you may not see quite as much on the exterior in the next month or so, but there's a lot of work taking place at Johnmere. And moving on to West High School, similar timeline that we talked about with Johnmere, the choir and orchestra areas all went through renovation process, and those were handed over at the new year as well. We did receive the certificate of occupancy for those spaces, they've been utilized since the school since we got out of there. They were holding those classes in the auditorium, and while we were renovating the choir and orchestra area, they're now in the choir and orchestra area, which allows us to start the renovation of the existing auditorium area, which we'll see in a slide here shortly. Yeah, you can go to the next one. These photos are of the new front office addition, and then wrapping around the west side of the building to where there's gonna be some spaces for theater auditorium, so a lot has been taking place there. You can see from, from the photos, it's been a little while since we met last, we were still working on puddings and foundations, last time we provided an update, all that work has been completed. The bearing masonry walls, structural steel, metal deck has all been installed. If you look at the bottom right photo, that's actually the roof of the addition, so that's a concrete slab roof, which is gonna end up with, you know, insulation and rubber on top of that, so that was poured last week, once again, great weather certainly helped to keep things moving there. Inside the building itself, seventy-five percent of the underground plumbing is complete, and then roughly twenty percent of the MEP above grade are up and complete, so there's some work they can do before the slab is poured inside the building, and they've been picking away at that as we've been moving forward, especially now that we've got the concrete poured over the, over the steel deck there. Moving on to the auditorium remodel, I touched on that briefly, all the demolition work inside that area was, is complete now, roughly ninety percent of the masonry rework is complete, gypsum wall systems ninety percent installed, seventy-five percent of the mechanical electrical pro- roughens are complete, so they've been doing a lot of work inside there, and then roughly twenty-five percent of the interior finishes are complete, so there, there's still a lot of work to do inside the auditorium, and it actually coincides very well with the addition going on outside, because those two spaces tie into each other with stairwells, a ramp, and then some lifts as well. Another portion of the school that we're working in is, is on the far northeast corner of the building, the, I guess it wouldn't be the competition locker rooms, I don't know if you call them the daily classroom locker rooms, are currently going underneath, under renovation right now, so all the demo has been completed in there. There was a lot of slab removed and new plumbing underground installed, slabs have been re-poured after the plumbing was done, masonry work is done, we started putting ceilings in, roughly twenty percent done on ceilings, and the mechanical electrical roughens are roughly seventy-five percent complete, and starting to do some paint interior finishes, tile work is gonna start this week as well. And then looking forward, the fitness addition is gonna start in, in mid-May, so kind of the next big change you'll see to the exterior of the building will be the existing fitness building coming down to make room for the new fitness addition. That's what we've got at West. Does anybody have any construction-related questions?
Just one, one question, and this is probably more for Diana. I've had the opportunity to talk to a number of groups around the community in the last month or so, and there seems to be a little bit of confusion regarding the work that's happening still from the referendum, because it's been so long. And now, since the last board meeting, I'm hearing, well, you have a three and a half million dollar budget deficit, yet you're spending all this money over here on all this construction. Is there an opportunity for us to do some communication, get the media involved, give them, you know, take them on a tour, some kind of an update of various buildings to say, hey, this is from two years ago, the referendum, like, this isn't new spending, you know, what have you, we're still being very responsible? Just to close that gap?
Yeah, I'm so glad you brought that up, because I saw some of those same comments last week in particular. So what I've been doing since I saw those comments is scheduling video tours, both where I would produce a video with the principals and go on a tour of what's done, what's coming up long-term, and then absolutely we'll get the media in the buildings as well to do news stories.
Okay.
So, all of that is happening right now, so.
That's great.
I think that media especially, because the, the information that we put out personally is great, but the people that follow that already know that the construction at West is because of the referendum, and they know that it's not because of a school combination, but yet we hear comments saying, why are they spending this new money, and why are they still adding on to West when they're not combining, it's like, this, you know, aren't the voters gonna get a say? I've heard that. I'm like, yeah, this was literally passed by the voters, so I think having the news stories to get to the population that doesn't follow our emails and social media would be great.
We'll make that happen, absolutely. Thank you.
I can't believe people don't follow our emails.
I do. All right, any other questions or comments on the construction update part before we hit the budget? Okay. Go ahead.
So on the budget specifically, nothing has changed since the last time you saw this, we are currently in the bidding process for East, for the work to be done there. And then the next thing is that you'll see in terms of budget numbers will be those three elementary schools for the summer, and then the horse man mill school and monastery after that. Any questions on that piece of it? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to the preliminary design plans for the Wassa West athletic fields. Sorry about that. I get bonus points if it goes faster, so I tried to skip one.
Hello, everybody. Just, I'll introduce myself again, Sharon Gould, program manager for Nexus, overseeing design, so right now we're actively working on West High School's athletic phase two, which is the multipurpose field at West. So, our agenda tonight is to review it and then go through any questions if you have any. All right, so just to start, just wanna quickly go over the scope of work that was approved in the referendum. No drawings were shared with the public, so I just have a general site plan shown, and we are doing athletic field lighting, the pole lights, and then we are adding athletic field synthetic turf to one of the fields, which will include lacrosse, soccer, and football striping from the field. So, to date, the district involvement with West, a lot of people have been showing up to our meetings, we've had four design meetings with the district leadership team and the building design committee, which includes Jason, you've talked to coaches behind the scenes, buildings and grounds, principals, maintenance, it's a pretty comprehensive group.
Yeah, as far as like, the user group goes, we, so, we have both their soccer coaches lacrosse, so they have not been part of the meetings, but every time we get together with Rettler and Nexus to talk about, and the, and the tech lighting, we talk about what's going, 'cause it'll impact, it'll also impact track with the lights, so it's a lot of different pieces and parts of, of the track and field. So, if you look at the baseball field lighting on the pole, that would be down the first baseline, when we did that project, that actually includes lighting that shines down onto the pole vault, which is on the north end of the football field, track area there, so that lighting exists. When we look, when we're looking at the lighting for this field, the lights will actually go on the far east side of, if you look at, if you look at the field, the track and the field, and then that black strip to the east, to the right, as you're looking at the picture, that is the long and triple jump, so the poles will, the light poles will actually go there, so that will be lighted, and there will be some spillover light that goes to that sandy area to the north of that, which is where our shot put is, the one area that will not be touched really by the lights, that would be effective enough to use, would be like the discus, which would be even further north and east of where you see the shot put there. Field events usually start earlier, so that's not a huge deal, we can get that in, otherwise, like we will do this year when we host the conference track meet, is we rent lights and bring them in, so that would be something that we would still continue to do over at the, the cost of adding another whole pole to get over to that would be, would be pretty, pretty significant in that part of the scope of this project, Richard, please.
So, to reiterate, we are putting the new field within the track, and so as we all, if you wanna advance to the next slide, we have had a lot of conversations, one of the issues that we wanna address is, you know, fitting the field within the track and making sure it's playable for tournaments, things like that, so we'll touch on that in a second. So, again, we're doing a new synthetic turf field on the existing field, it'll be similar to East on how that field lays out, we're gonna be replacing the soccer goals, the school posts and pads for the new field. The new, I know it says concrete area D, that's the gray section to the north or the left side, it's actually gonna be rubberized similar to the track, just to clarify, 'cause that's a little.
That's where hydro pads and center trunks.
So that's part of the scope, and then we're also, part of that too, is gonna be dealing with the site drainage, we're working with the city to get that to work, but all the stormwater will be contained within our scope of work in this area, so we don't need to interfere with other parts of the property, so that's part of what we're looking into as well. So with that, just, again, we did get a soccer field fit in, I believe it's like, the regulations say that the field width needs to be between fifty-five feet and, I think it's eighty, eighty, eighty-five feet, so we're a little bit short of sixty-five feet right now, so that actually works to have a playable soccer field. We were really concerned, we went back and forth with width versus the number of track lanes, so we were able to keep all the track lanes intact, have a regulation play soccer field, and some of the other areas that we've been talking a lot with the coaches on is just to make sure that the throw-ins are acceptable, and all those, you know, the soccer teams are probably gonna be sitting on the track, there's protection that would be part of the project, that would help protect the track when the soccer games in play, but again, we have had a lot of information, a lot of discussions to make sure we're not missing those targets.
So the, so the issue remains that a regulation soccer field per the WIA to play tournament games on is sixty-five yards, ours right now, as it sits here, and this isn't final, it's fifty percent, is right in that sixty-three plus, give or take. We think there's a pretty good chance we'll still be, it'll still be cleared to play playoff games on, as we've said in the past, if for some reason it isn't, we, we still will maintain our grass field to the east. Wassa East has turf field that we could use for home playoff games, as well as we could continue to look at renting the People State Bake Soccer Complex, which has been done in the past as well, so there's all those options, still take care of that. Basically, the, the most narrow parts for us, or that, that keep it from sixty-five, or with us trying to make it as wide as possible, the narrow spots are the four corners, is where the, the corner kicks take place. So, we've actually had our new girl soccer coach, his name is Lance Kelly, Lance's son was a senior at Wassa East this year, actually, and they were, oh, he and I have had multiple conversations about this, he was over clearing the snow off of Easts and kind of stepping it off to see what theirs is and exactly what ours will look like, and how many steps the average corner kick takes, so.
and kind of stepping it off to see what theirs is and exactly what ours will look like and how many steps the average corner kick takes. So there's been really good communication on that with all of our user groups, and, and I think everyone's on the same page and comfortable with, with where we sit right now, and as we become more final moving forward.
So we do, we do include, um, the end zones. Um, Warriors and West is the language that we're using right now. Um, every, you know, we're getting feedback on that to make sure that that's adequate and acceptable. And because this is, um, Wausau West High School, uh, we are putting the logo in the center of the field, and that will be tweaked a little bit. This is just 50%. Um, just with the blue and the um, gold is gonna change a little bit based on feedback from everybody, but it's a preliminary logo to show how that field wants to play out. Um, on the south end or the right, we do have a practice area for football as well. Um, so I just wanted to point out what that section was as well. So, um, I wanna move to the next slide. So we do have a copy of the lighting plan that Jason was referring to, so there's gonna be four new poles coming in. Um, and that's a, it's a data screen, it has the light levels, it's hard to read, but we're doing full photometrics to make sure that it meets the needs. And, um, like was mentioned before, we're looking at all the track event locations around the field to make sure that between the softball, baseball lighting, I think it's, I don't remember which, baseball, along with this work that we're putting in that is coordinated, um, to go forward and adequately illuminate the space. So, go ahead.
The other, if you go back to this one there, Cassie, thank you. The other exciting thing about this, as we've talked about design, is the the sprinkler stuff will change. So where do you see that P, is it P2 or, I think that's P3 on the west side there, to the left, bottom left corner, um, where that pole is, that's also where the water will kind of be relocated to come to there. But the other nice thing when we, as we talk about in the design meetings, is a lot of the underground stuff, um, we struggle out there in the backyard at Wausau West with wifi and internet connections, and there's a lot of things that we can't do out there right now, like all of our stuff is run off a huddle. We have a nice huddle camera at East, and we have one at Tom Field, but we don't have the ability or the wireless in, ability right now to make that work at Wausau West. So, um, we've had the, our district tech people have been involved, and we're kind of burying some of that stuff, and then there'll be data points around the the field, we'll be able to access those things. So we're really looking forward to have those upgrades out there in addition to just the turf and the, how nice it's gonna look. It'll be much more user-friendly as well.
Jason, just one quick question, that was asked actually this weekend. Um, along those same lines about tech and this had to do with health, do we have an AED to fib device out in that area?
So, w- we can, actually I've had a couple people ask me that as well. So what we currently have is we have an AED in that shed that is, would be the southeast corner of where you see the track right now. Um, anytime there is a anytime there's any of the three sports that are scheduled to play on here, our trainer would be at that, and she has a portable AED that she travels with her all the time.
Okay.
The only exception is we don't always have a trainer at baseball and softball. So there is, if you go, we don't have it on this picture, but softball is on the far northeast corner of our property. They have a shed out there, and there is a separate AED out at softball.
Okay, good, and the question was, could we have it in the, I don't know if that's the concession stand?
Um, that's the press box that you see on the far west bottom corner of the picture.
Cause it would be, they said it would be centrally located.
Yep, and, and we do know that minutes take a difference. So those are, that's a good question, and definitely a question that we should probably, like, we have an emergency safety plan for all of our different sites and all of our athletics. Um, that would definitely be something to look at with our school nurses and our, and our trainer and all that, to see if we feel adequate right now, or if it would be better, if it would be good to purchase maybe one or two and have them at other locations as well. So I'll take that feedback back.
Best practice across the board, like in businesses everywhere. So.
Agreed. Like, our coaches all just went through, not all, we just offered another round of CPR AED certification uh, for the ones who are expiring for our spring sports and going into summer and fall coaches, so we continue to offer those. It's actually a little bit different now. There's an online component that used to be the kind of the book part that they do before, and then when they come, they just do the skills test with, um, Tim Kostreski and Jess Truax from, or Tim from West and Jess from East, they do it together and certify a bunch of coaches, so.
Can you find out what it would take?
Yes.
I guess to get that done, and just let me know if we can, if we gotta raise money, or if we have money for it, or whatever.
Will do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, I'm so excited about this. Thank you for the update, and I appreciate all of the added work that you're doing in order to try and figure out how we can make those, that soccer field playable for, for those games, so I appreciate that. And just to reiterate, kind of from our last conversation and presentation as well as that, because there's some misinformation about this as well, that this is scoped work from the referendum. This is not new money spent. This is not a new idea that was lacking integrity from our referendum funds, but that this was part of the question. And so I'm excited to see that work kind of come to completion. So, thank you.
Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is an action requested item. We're gonna take a look at policy 5120. Kayle Bushman will seek court direction related to staff requests for their children to attend the schools where they work.
Thanks for taking the time. Um, is it action requested on this one, or is it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, it is.
Well, it's, I mean, this is the committee meeting, so the only action would be to go to the next board meeting.
Well, thanks for taking the time, and hopefully we won't, we won't need the full 15 minutes. Just to give some background, um, we're talking about policy 5120. This is the assignment within district. It was adopted in 2009. Just for a little background, the idea behind it was that, once upon a time, we had students who were attending schools outside of their zones, right? And it got to the point where schools would fill up, and then we'd have the district place students out of their home place somewhere else. So that was the, the basis for this one, to get things back into alignment. Um, one of the things that we do is we still have a process for families to request going to another school if they so choose to. There's a couple different reasons that we allow it. One would be if they moved out of that zone during the school year, um, into a different one. Um, some other ones would be if there was an IP that's involved with the process. And then, um, the one that we're here to talk about is, is part B, it's other special considerations deemed by the Director of Pupil Services or designated. So in terms of processes that we've used for allowing that, it's been for educationally relevant purposes. It would be for a situation where there may have been bullying, or peer conflict, or something that's extenuating. Um, what we're here to ask you about is we've had a couple things in, like, both last year and this year that are coming to surface, specific to our teachers. Um, and so we've received a couple different requests from our staff members, asking if they could have their student come to the school with where they're teaching. Some of the reasons that they've given us is that by the time I drop my student off at school and get, it's too late, um, and a couple di- different circumstances that went along with that. Uh, one of the things that we, we consider with that is, will it be problematic where all of a sudden moving a teacher's student to their teaching location, is that gonna cause our, a crunch in numbers where now we're having to displace community kids out of that area? So we'd be very aware of that, and that would be something that we wouldn't want to do. Um, but in talking with the teachers, you know, some of the other concerns that they've talked about is, uh, it feels like, um, you know, I could get daycare in this district and open enroll my kid there, and then some of those problems that they're having. So we're looking for a little bit of guidance from the board, if they feel like, as a staff member, allowing some leniency for folks to be able to bring their kid to school if they chose to as part of the process. Um, if the board would think, well, that's, that's reasonable, or it's inconsistent with what we're doing with the rest of the community. Um, and so we have some hesitations about those things.
Questions, comments, board members?
I, I think it's a no-brainer.
I, I think it is as well. I, I think the easy thing for you would be to just have a rule that says no. Um, so I'm impressed that you're bringing us something that actually makes your job harder, because the easy time will be when a teacher requests it, and there's like 14 kids in the section, and that's easy. The hard time will be when there's 26, 27, and you're kind of putting them over the number and getting close to the cap, and so there's gonna be some times where it's gonna be a little difficult, and you're gonna have to make a hard call, but despite that, I think it's, I, I think we should do it.
It's been my, that's been my, when I've discussed this with teachers, it seems to me when there's a, a legitimate reason, they're far more understanding than to say, well, there's room in this classroom, when you're saying my kid can't come to this just because it's part of the rule, and it's hard to defend a rule that doesn't make sense. In those situations to say, yep, it, it feels like, and we would build some processes that, right, a certain date, let us know by, if we're getting this close to, to cap enrollment, then we cap it as well and not allow it. But, um, just, I guess, asking the, the board, and it seems like it's a yes, that we can make exceptions in those cases.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, then I'm seeking a motion to approve adding language to policy 5120 that allows children or staff members, children of staff members to attend where they work.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, that one, we'll vote a full board. Thank you. So, next we have our staffing, um, budget plan. Wausau's school leadership faces a projected 3.5 million dollar budget shortfall. Administration will present a staff reduction proposal that would allow for a balanced budget for the 24, 25 school year. I'm conflicted on this one, and Jim is not here, so I'm gonna just pass it down to my left, to my, uh, senior ranking official here, and Pat will chair this one.
Can I keep passing to the left?
Yeah.
Delegate.
Alright. So, who is up?
I'd be presenting this one, yeah. I'd be presenting this one to start, I think Tamitha might be, uh, she's gonna come up too, cause there'll be some questions. So, um, I think before we hop into the, the content, I just wanna respond a little bit to the, to the comments that we heard at the start of the meeting. And frankly, what we heard tonight, um, I think represents one of the, the most challenging, uh, situations that we face in education, right? We, for the last 20 years, uh, funding for public education has been eroding. Wisconsin used to be in the top 20 states in terms of funding for public education, now we're in the bottom half. And, and I respect the people who spoke tonight, and, and certainly, you know, um, Mr. Graduleski's position has value, and I think, I don't know if I wrote it here, every position that we, that we have in our district has value. Everybody's putting in, you know, hours of work, um, that support our mission. So, I, I respect what they're saying, um, and so, you know, and, and at the same time, um, you know, we are, we, we do, you'll see some, some data a little bit later. Um, and, and so just as an example, one of the reasons that we were looking at the Dean of Students position at Horace Mann is in our other secondary schools, uh, each administrator serves roughly 325 to 350 students, but at Horace Mann, uh, it's 220 students. So, so certainly there's value there, and it's like, how do you, how, how do you, you know, make a decision on where we reduce to balance this budget? So, so I appreciate that people coming and sharing the perspective. I also think that, you know, this was a, a position that, you know, we, we announced, because it's unique, and it's the only dean of students in the district, um, I think as we, as we, as people become more aware of reductions, I think you get a lot of support for a lot of the things that we're, we're, we're looking to reduce. So I just wanted to thank people for sharing, um, you know, again, understand the, the declining, uh, funding that's happened over the last 20 years. Every one of these cuts has been thoughtful, um, and so we'll, we'll, we'll hop to it. So, so you've seen this budget summary, um, three and a half million, um, ESER, some carryover, and, uh, and then the, the one and a half additional deficit. Can you go forward, Cassie? Um, always focus on our why. Um, you know, kids and staff first. The district has to be financially healthy, or we don't exist. Um, we wanna be an attractive employer, and we've gotta meet our obligations, right? Uh, statutory and contractual. Uh, next one. These were, we're just kinda reminding people from the last meeting, uh, these are areas that, you know, we can, we can leverage to balance this budget. Again, 85% or so of our budget is, is people. Um, so that's an area we certainly have to look at. I don't think we need to go through these again. Um, because we're looking at people, we, again, we just wanna have everybody understand the, the environment in which we're, we're working. So if you go to the next one, Cassie, we did a a variety of, of comparisons. Again, these are some of our peer districts that we use. If you can't read it, it's, uh, this one is Everest, Eau Claire, Nina, Oshkosh, Point, and Wausau. And I wanna caution people, when you look at these graphs, one thing that we've learned is that different districts categorize positions differently, so these are just, um, general comparisons, you know, we can't get, we can't put too much leverage on them, or, uh, too much, I'll just leave it at that. Um, there's gonna be some variety, there's gonna be so- some inaccuracies. For instance, that thing in Oshkosh, I don't know what's going on there, right? Um, but this one, for instance, is all district level certified staff. So you can see, you know, for instance, um, Everest has about 50, we have about 40. Um, so you can see we're kind of in the, in the ballpark in terms of, of district level certified staff. If you go, there's just a few more, we'll just kind of summarize though, and, uh, these, and see if there's questions. This is our building level comparisons. Um, here we're a little high, but that doesn't surprise us because we have 13 elementary schools, right? And that contributes, uh, to these numbers. Again, same schools. These are our teacher comparisons, again, right in the ballpark. We know we've worked really hard to maintain that level of staffing even throughout the, the student enrollment decline, but you can see again where we're right in the ballpark here. Pupil services, this one, uh, you know, people have asked, you know, we had a referendum a few years ago, um, so our, and we're happy about this, right? We were intentional that we wanted to have more pupil services staff, uh, in order to serve students and, and support others. So our, our pupil service uh, to student ratio is, is the lowest in this group, and we're glad to see that. You know what, I didn't do it at the beginning, just to make sure people know what we're looking at. I apologize. Um, that was just, it's looking at two years of data. The green bar is the total FTEs, the orange line is the student ratio to that particular employee group. I apologize for skipping over that. I think that was, oh no, there's one more, right? Support staff. Um, again, integral part of our system, um, want, but we, we still have to look at every, every, uh, part of our, of our district to see where we uh, can, can make reductions or become more efficient. Again, we're right in that pupil service to student ratio. Again, don't know what's happening in Nina, I'm guessing someone is classified in some other way. Um, so that one may not be as, as relevant, but the others kind of tell that same story. Why don't I pause there for a second? Other questions, first of all, on the deficit, or our staffing, or anything like that? Otherwise, uh, we'll talk a little bit about, uh, a, a, one potential way forward. Okay? So, did you wanna talk about this, or did you want me to?
I am.
Okay, sure, you created this one.
So the first thing that I would mention right off the bat is that this is still a work in progress, and we are not completed yet, but we wanted to give you kind of a state of the state of where we are at. Um, so at the time this graph was put together, um, the largest blue section there that you see represents all of the ESER staffing that we specifically added in response to the ESER funding being received. That's 1.2 million dollars. Um, and we've, we rounded that like right off, because if it was part of a position, then the other part flows into regular budget. With the remaining portion of what's there, what we tried to do was show you from group by group by group, what those impacts basically would be. Um, the teacher group is the largest portion of that. They're also our largest employee group by far in a way. Um, and additionally, it's important to note that all of the teacher reductions that are represented here are enrollment-driven. We don't really have, um, areas that we had plenty of people who wanted to take classes, but we're cutting it anyway. So when we're looking at what classes we offer, it's based on the number of students who've signed up, and whether or not that's a viable amount of kids to be able to have those sections run. Um, that 26.5, I just wanted, for full disclosure, that is correct for when we ran this. There was one, um, calculation piece that actually Mr. McKee had asked us about, that after this slide had already been published, um, that amount shifted by about three FTE based on a question he had asked, and we realized that there wasn't a a number carrying over. So it dropped to more like 23.05, just so people are aware. Um, you may recall, Mr. McKee, it was a blank cell that hadn't transferred from the, the feeding document. So we got that fixed, and it's off by about three. Um, administration, um, what's represented by that blue pie is one administrative position essentially from this building. However, the cost is also reflective of the fact that Red Granite Charter School is starting up, and there was a 0.25 add of a principal for that building. And, um, and with some other changes with regard to Montessori's expanding services, there's a, a thought that potentially we could just do a 0.25 at Hua Texas to pair with the Red Granite, and then also the curriculum portion that's, um, Granite, and then also the curriculum portion that's grant-funded for Red Granite. So we took in that change for Red Granite, HUATexas, into the dollar amount of savings on that one, because we knew that those were coming, or at least the Red Granite portion was. The next group is the pink one.
AES.
Oh, AES and clerical. So the pink portion represents just the clerical office, non-para positions. AES is our administrative and educational support employee group. It encompasses both clerical office-type roles, as well as our para group. But I separated para group out for purposes of what's reflected there. They are that smaller teal portion down on the right-hand side. They are also, that's one of the groups, AES and paras are not completed in terms of our staffing planning yet. So there's more work to be done there. I put in what I think may be representative reductions based on conversations I've had more anecdotally with supervisors that are making those recommendations. But we'll have more up-to-date information to share with the board when we ask for action at your next school board meeting, because this is not asking for action, this is more of an update for you today. Custodial maintenance, that portion up there represents a reduction of 2 overall FTE within that entire employee group. We're still working on what that will look like, we have a few different possible ideas. I met, again, today with Ryan and his team to talk about that. I'm going to do orange, and then I'm going to come back to the dean of students. So the orange is the municipal, and that employee group is those staff that don't fall into one of the other categories, were put into sort of another category called municipal. That represents a couple of staff members. Specifically, one is, I have a retirement coming up in human resources with the director or the employee relations manager. I, she'll be retiring in October. My intention, given our budget situation, is that our department is going to do some further restructuring to try to move forward without that position. Some other things probably need to shift as a result of that, but that's work that we can continue to take on. So there's a couple of things in there. There's also a position that's been being carried in the budget that wasn't currently filled with a person. We've decided to move forward without any attempt to fill that vacant position. So that's also part of what's reflected in the municipal labor group orange slice. The green slice is that dean of students. I do want to respond because of the question, or the comment that was made earlier, that the dollar amount is not reflective of that position. It actually is. I think people are looking at that number, any of those numbers up there, thinking that those are salary-only, those are not. That is salary and total benefit package for any position. And to be really clear, the numbers that are represented in the pie chart are not specific cost to specific people. We used FTEs that were generated, but they're multiplied by the average total cost for each employee group that they are representing. So the $93,000 and some additional change there that's represented, that is the average cost of our teachers. So if you did look at all of our teacher category, because the dean of students is a teacher position with extended days and additional stipends, that amount is actually the average cost of a teacher position in the school district. And so that cost could be higher, that cost could be lower, depending upon who's actually impacted. But for the graph, and because we haven't identified or had individual conversations as of yet, this really made most sense for the representative kind of diagram we were going for.
I think that's what we have for tonight. I know the board had requested a kind of a spreadsheet, a more detailed spreadsheet of staffing. We're going to get that, I don't think we've sent that yet, have we? Then we'll send that, too. So this is our update. And like Tabitha said, we're going to come back with some more details, but we're looking for feedback from the board at this point. Okay, questions? Comments from anyone?
Can I ask? Oh, I'm sorry.
Was it Cody? Anything from you?
No, I'm good right now.
Thank you. Mr. Krieger? You open?
Okay. I wanted to ask just specifically about that dean of students position a little bit, because obviously, we are getting a lot of feedback, and first of all, I appreciate the work. I know this is ridiculously difficult, and no one wants to eliminate anyone or anything, and everyone's valuable. And, you know, we're facing a really complex situation. So my, two things. Obviously, we don't want to lose people, but we also, at the same time, don't want to change the salary increase, and, you know, so it's, we can't have it all. My question for you is with regard to, what was the thought behind establishing the position of the dean of students at Horace Mann in the first place? And, you know, why now is it not necessary?
Sure. So the history on that position is very interesting, and it happened just before I started in the district, but I've been briefed on all of what happened in that conversation by people who were actually involved in that. The reality is, there wasn't a dean of students position until, I believe it was the 2021 school year, and there was a change in the administrative structure. And as a result, we had two people, and they were only moving forward with one at Horace Mann, based on numbers of students and the comparison to John Muir. And then, as a result of that, there was a request, could we add the dean of students for one year, kind of as a buffer while we transition away from three to two for administration moving forward? So that shift was made, and Hope was the staff member that was here at the time. She moved into the dean of students position. And then the pandemic hit, right after all of those decisions were made, and the position was continued forward while we were still working through all of that process. I will share with you, Hope, who was holding the position prior to Robbie, had resigned last year. In hindsight, we really should have reanalyzed the position last year. It got posted, hired, it was an internal move, and we moved forward. It was fine, because we had that extra ESER funding that we were using to kind of hold up all of those staff, as we've explained before. But at this point, when we're looking at the reductions that we're looking at, and we look at the comparison of student ratio to, I'll say, administrative positions, because although the dean is a teacher position by contract, I think just about everybody looks at that as being sort of a supervisor-admin type role. And so as a result, that number comparison, which Dr. Hilt happened to mention earlier, really does point to the fact that we're really out of alignment there. I will say, we certainly see and understand and hear the concerns and appreciate the concerns with regard to behavior and students and kind of struggles that the staff are having. We have different thoughts and ideas about how we may need to address that going forward to ensure that we can do that adequately, because honestly, those concerns have increased more and more since the position was added than even before. So it would tell me that I think there's something different we probably need to try to do there, maybe to rethink how we're responding. That's not to say anything about, you know, his ability to do that, his role as a dean, I don't think it is person-specific. I think it's structural. And so we've been having lots of conversations about what that could look like.
I appreciate the background on that. I guess, you know, just to put it out there, I'm really concerned about removing, because what I hear feedback-wise from community members, parents, students, and staff is behavior is a major concern for them in these buildings. And that's a commitment of mine to really want to address those issues, so I'm concerned about eliminating a position that's directly addressing behavior. But I hear what you're saying, when we're having a 50% increase in major behaviors in the last year, maybe there's some, a different workaround, I don't know. But that's my concern, so I appreciate the background, and I guess we'll continue to learn more about what else is out there.
I have a quick question. Sorry. So from my understanding, from what was said earlier, the only dean of students position that we have is at Horace Mann, right? I mean, there's not one.
That is correct. It is the only one in the district.
So then, who handles these, all the, this laundry list of things that were brought tonight by, during our public comment? Who handled that at Muir or some of these other schools? I mean, what specific administrative authority takes care of that then at those other, at Muir and the other facilities?
Can I ask you to clarify what it is that you're asking?
Also, I mean, when they retire, about going to all the hearings, handling all these disciplinary needs, stepping in when the principal and vice-principal are gone. So who does that at Muir, then? If there's not a dean of students there?
Yep. They have a position, I believe they call teacher in charge. Most of our schools have that. Oftentimes, it's a counselor, or a social worker, or a psychologist that's in the building. It sometimes can be a classroom teacher. They are oftentimes teachers that also have an administrative license, and they're looking to gain some experience and some background. So we have a variety of those. It just depends upon the building and the circumstances that we're talking about.
Thank you. I mean, I kind of expressed Karen's concerns, too. I have a concern with eliminating a position that seems to be very needed, but I'm interested to hear more about it, so.
Sure. Yeah, and without a doubt, there are needs. It's a matter of how we might be able to go about those.
I have a trailing question to Cody's as well. So disciplinary, the major disciplinary numbers and the truancy numbers, if you compare those, Horace Mann to John Muir, are there significant differences in numbers? And you maybe can't even answer that question.
That is out of my wheelhouse, but Dr. Hiltz and/or Mr. Bushman and me.
I don't know, are you up to date on numbers?
I can't speak to the exact numbers of it. I know that.
I'm talking to my.
I know that Muir and Mann this year, we're working together this summer to coordinate what their disciplinary processes and procedures were, so they're really trying to get fine-tuned. When are we issuing BTLs or behavior tracking forms for which types of behavior? So they're working really closely to make that happen. So then, is the jump in the behavior forms, because people are more aware of it, and they're addressing it and writing it down? Is it because the behaviors are occurring more often? So there's a few variables you'd have to consider with that.
I guess my question, though, more specifically, was, are the numbers comparable at Horace Mann to John Muir?
Well, you'd have to go at 5%. I don't have to answer that. One of the things that's a struggle is you have John Muir, that's got quite a bit more population than does Horace Mann. But we could find that if you're interested in it.
We can certainly bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think basically proportionally, she was just asking, are there a proportion of disciplinary action per student body the same at Muir and at Mann? Right, right. Corey?
The staffing spreadsheet, you said about, that'll just, a little more detailed information about what's going on on the chart, okay? I had a question. I realize that most of the ESER-funded positions were more support staff to try to help students in general, there were more support staff to help students recover from COVID things. Is that, first, is that correct?
So it depends upon what you're defining as support staff. Many of them were teacher positions, but they were in a resource capacity, so they weren't necessarily the first line teaching in the classroom. They were helping support students outside of their maybe general ed math class, but they were going to the resource center for additional supports on either actual curriculum or potentially for, like, study skills or test-taking skills, those kinds of things.
Okay. Have we, have you identified that most of those positions then would not be, like, now a necessary position or a critical position for some students?
There will be some need, and we're talking about exactly how that takes place, so that's sort of tied into some of the conversations that I said have been happening that are connected to the dean of students transition. So there's a number of different conversations we've been having there, haven't settled exactly on that final solid path. But the positions that were originally hired for ESER will be eliminated going forward for next year. Most of the people in those positions have retired, and those that haven't are being able to be absorbed back into the department that they are certified to teach in. So for example, we have a social studies, I believe, or maybe it was English, one of our staff members at one of the buildings is just going back into their department, being a teacher in the department, as a result of that restructured change.
Okay. Then with the custodian or maintenance side, if we are actually eliminating district positions, are we trying to contract with outside sources, then, to take care of those things?
So we had that conversation today. We do, at this point, I do not believe that contracting is a direction that we are going to be moving. The slight adjustments that we're talking about might be, in one building, it was a reduction of like a .25, and a .25 in another building. And we currently have a vacant position posted for custodial maintenance, so we've put that on hold right now, so that's one of those positions. The other one is just kind of shaving off some pieces here and there, and we have a couple of upcoming retirements that we believe are going to come through, connected to where we'll find that savings for that group. And then just redistributing according to their needs for the size where footage in the buildings and that sort of thing.
All right. Ms. Reyes?
No, but then, I was going to ask what I was going to ask.
Okay. All right, a couple clarifying questions, and I can probably wrap three of them into one request. So this pie chart, can you provide the board with the detail behind this, not the names? Like, obviously, we know a name, so position, school, and what the role is?
I don't have it to that level of detail for you.
Can you get it? Can you put it in that level of detail for us?
Potentially, and I'd be willing to talk to you about that, to make sure that I'm understanding what you're asking for.
Yeah, something that, something that just clarifies. ESER staffing is 1.2 million.
Yeah.
Here's, here's the positions, here's the schools that they're at, and here's the function that they serve.
Each of these came from a very large, multiple-sheet spreadsheet that's pretty easy to get any detail. So yes, I understand, and I can get you something that backs that information up.
And how many teachers make up the 574,000 again?
Well, I don't have that broken out between the two positions. So there's a net of, as I said, there was a number of three, so 23.05 reduction is what's in the red and the blue part, because I did it by the total within each, and I just split out the ESER, because I thought if I include that, it throws everything off for them and paras, because that's where the bulk of the ESER funding was spent.
I have no idea what you just said. So how many people are represented in the red teacher pie? That's about 23% of this total, 2.35 million.
So all I could tell you is that it's about half of the blue, which is about a third of the 23.05. So I, as I said, I have more detailed spreadsheets behind that, but the teachers are all blended into one planning document. We don't have a separate document for the ESER compared to the others. So the total that's up there, the minus 26.05, that's really 23.05.
Yep.
That is teachers that are within the red and the blue. The ESER-funded teachers, as well as the teachers that are contributing to the $1.5 million reduction, and the other ESER-supplemented or supplanted, whatever word that I should be using, in the budget.
Okay, but in order to get to those numbers, you do have a buildup.
Yep, I do, and I said I would provide that for you.
Wonderful, wonderful. From a merit increase perspective, because that's going to be part of this discussion, can you create a, just a simple grid that lists job group or job category down the side, function, teachers, admins, whatever, down one side, 1 through 6% on the top, and just fill it in? If we gave a group, this group, 2%. If we gave a group, this group, 2%, here's what it would cost?
I think that that can be completed, yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you. The other, the other piece that I would like, and I know, we talked about this last week, are you completing the org charts for all of the administrative teams?
Yes, yep.
And we don't need, we don't need names, just function and position?
Well, we have a diagram for that, and I just didn't get a chance to pull that, but as I had mentioned to you, there's a backup documentation that's coming, based on what you had asked for.
Okay, so we'll be able to see in the finance department?
Yep.
Here's all the bodies that are there?
Correct.
Again, not names, but just?
Yep, yep.
Okay. All right. And the other thing for the board to consider, too, is that, and it may not be a one-for-one, but when I go through these exercises in my day job, we try to focus on offsetting. If you're going to have a frontline position eliminated, you have one corresponding non-frontline position eliminated. So if it's a teacher, you're going to have something behind the scenes to go with that, so you're going to have a one-for-one ratio. That's something to consider. It kind of holds, you know, everybody accountable for contributing to the cause, and I think we'll be able to see more of that detail when we understand more about the, what the buildup of this is. Because my, my challenge is, I, the dean of students position, I've, I've got 100 questions about it, but I can't effectively say whether or not I support the removal of it, or that there should be three of them, because I don't have the context around what does it mean with respect to the rest of these roles.
Sure.
So I, I think that, that detail's going to help. The other thing to consider is that there's, and what Dr. Hiltz said and what Karen said, I mean, everybody understands, this is a painful process, right? None of these positions are, are invaluable, none of them are just, you know, purely overhead. So operating without them is going to, going to have an impact. We could, and I want to throw this out to the board, there's, there can be a combination to get to what we have to do. And what I mean by that is, there can be reductions of positions for whatever reason, there can be adjusted merit increases, Mr. Sellers, you mentioned that at the last meeting. So you can play with the numbers, you know, staffing numbers, you can play with the increases to try to get to where we need to get to and come up with the 3.5 million. Or, an alternative could be that we do those reductions that make sense for those that you have rationalized through the, the numbers or whatever. We consider what salary increases we would like to give, and when I say like, I'm talking within reason, we've talked about CPI, you know, and I do think that there would be some variance between positions, meaning that those positions that we compete more for, I think we have to recognize that. Specifically, our frontline teaching staff, they're being poached by every district around here, I think we need to consider that. If we did that, we could then go to an operating referendum and ask the community, here's what we have in front of us, we're going to do these cuts because these make sense, we're going to go forward, we'd like to go forward with these salary increases, whether that's zero, whether that's five, I have no idea what it is, we can fund that for a year out of our fund balance, but this November, there would be an operating referendum where we would ask the community, hey, can you, do you support? Because we know referendum is the funding mechanism for us to get additional monies, ask the community, do you support, you know, additional money each year for these specific purposes? And let the community weigh in on what they think. And if they say yes, great, then we have a very defined plan moving forward, and if they say no, we are crystal clear that next year at this time, there's going to be twice the impact of, of what we're seeing right now.
It's definitely a viable option if the board decides they would like to go that route. There are a number of those exact questions on the ballots across the state for April. I know of a couple of my colleagues who are in the middle of their marketing for that exact process. I know some that have been successful in the past, I know others who are putting together the, the data to support it for their communities going forward. So yes, that's, that's one possible option.
And I say that not to shirk the responsibility of administration or the board or whatever, but this truly is a community issue. I mean, everybody understands that, right? This is not just going to impact, you know, the things that are happening within our buildings today, this is going to be broader than that. So I, I think it is only right to be transparent with the community about what we need, what we would do with it, and, and why we think it's necessary. So I would open that up for feedback for the rest of the board on, on thoughts, if that's an option.
It is an option, because we're looking at every single thing, and the more data we have, the more transparent we are, you know, and however the health insurance aspect is affecting things and how we would use that as a tool with, with staff and any wage increases or not, everything is, needs to be discussed, 100%.
Is that something the board would like us to develop? Others?
I think it sounds like a good idea to look at and pursue, I mean, do what we can and present to the public an opportunity to support where support is needed. And if it's a no, then we're back to, you know, looking where else we can gain efficiencies and...
Right, and next year, we're here at this time, maybe not?
You know, the other thing is that it might buy us some time, we're going to learn, obviously, quite a bit as the demographer brings forward information and helps us understand that picture as a whole, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. There is, there is obviously potential dollars out there that we may be able to realize through that process.
So that's my question for you. So you're suggesting, still, according to the numbers, move forward where we can, where it makes sense?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
But if there's still a gap in that 3.5, we go to operational referendum in November to cover that gap?
That would start the next year.
Right.
So this year, we would fund that delta out of our fund balance, yes.
Right, okay.
Which would end up being more than the 7.6, or the 760,000, likely, just less, right?
Yeah, because I, I would recommend that we would look at it in three scenarios, right? Utopia, middle-of-the-road, and, you know, kind of bare bones. And respond in terms of how we, how much we would have to use from fund balance to do each one of those, and then we could make an informed decision about the amount of risk that we wanted to take on for this year.
And just so the board's aware, I think you are, you know, we've done some preliminary work around that, but we are in a good financial situation to incur debt, so that, that's a, it's a viable option.
It's certainly something that districts, you know, as Tabitha said, are doing all over the state and have for the past year or two, that I've certainly been exposed to other board members having to address this in a massive way. I mean, we need to let our community decide, you know, what they want for their, their schools.
Right, right.
And that's how they do.
Yeah, and we're going to be honest, we're going to be open, say, here's what it means, here's what you get, or here's what the impact is going to be. And that's not a, not communicated, obviously, you know, threatening kind of a manner, it just is what it is. And I hate that saying, but we have to give them reality.
I agree absolutely, and I think, you know, as, as what John had mentioned about, when we have this demographer coming in and looking at more of the needs of the district more closely, more quote-unquote scientifically, I think we'll see things. And moving forward with looking for positions that, in ways, we can, we can still cut some spending, I think is definitely reasonable. But yeah, Pat, I think that's a great idea, and it kind of gives us options to pursue, and it gives us more information to pursue. I mean, you can't make a good decision without all the information presented to you, so, absolutely.
Okay, is that enough direction for you guys?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else? Pardon comments?
You guys gonna get that pond look at that west?
There may or may not be one there already, from what I understand.
We have a navigable waterway on the campus, don't we?
We need more rain.
All right, thank you. You know what? I'm going to seek a motion to adjourn before Lance gets here.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you, good night, everyone.
We have our next one.
We have another, yeah, we do have another one.
Okay, I will move then into our special meeting and call the special meeting to order. Up first, we have our consent agenda, which may include appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, means of absence. And then, before I seek a motion on it, just a point of order, one of the items on the consent agenda is the issue with the counselor slash dean of students. Is that still part of this consent agenda, or is that coming back with more information?
I came back to the table to say, in light of all of the discussion, I would recommend that you remove that second item from the addendum that you received. The first item on the addendum, though, we would still move forward for action.
Okay, so then, I'll seek the motion, and then we can have discussion if needed. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, but with the removal of the dean of students slash counselor position change.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any questions, comments on the, that consent agenda? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a request for a closed session to review applicant materials, consider applicants for possible interviews, and may select applicants to interview for the position of district administrator pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.85, sub-1, sub-C. I need a first and a second, and then we'll do a roll call.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, a roll call, please.
Chad Krieger?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli?
Yes.
Joanna Reyes?
Yes.
Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Karen Vanmore?
Yes.
Lance Drow.
Yes. Okay, we'll move into close, thank you, everyone.